Okay, before we start our meeting, we are going to take a moment of silence for all of the Mills Fire survivors and the ones who unfortunately were not. Okay, thank you. Sandy, roll call.
Councilmember Stacy Green.
Present.
Councilmember Bob Hall is absent. Councilmember Ken Paffini.
Here.
Councilmember Susan Tavallaro.
Here.
Mayor Kim Green.
Here.
I need a motion to accept Bob's absence.
I'll move to accept Bob's absence.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Public business from the floor. Anybody in the audience that would like to speak on anything that is not on the agenda, you have the floor.
My name is Eddie Henderson.
You have to come to the mic.
We have a TV guide.
Even though we can hear you.
My name is Eddie Henderson. I'm a government liaison with the American Red Cross. I'm here from Alabama. Re greeting, sorry for what has happened here, but we're here to help. We met with already 61 different people and have provided individual assistance. And we have provided 62 cleanup kits already. Everybody will be here for, everybody's taken care of. And the equipment will be at the community center parking lot. And they can pick up tools or whatever they need for cleanup in the area. If there's anything you need, I'll give you my phone number. My personal cell is 334.
Want to do that online?
That's fine. If they need Red Cross, they can call me. I'm here for at least two weeks. I'm staying in Warrica, but I can get here in a hurry if you need me.
Send your first last name again, please.
Eddie, E-D-D-Y, Henderson.
From Alabama.
Alabama.
Roll tide.
Amen.
No, no. I'm from Oklahoma. I'm just glad somebody here with a deeper southern accent is here. They can make fun of you now.
Well, when I go to the restaurants to order food, I have to say it at least two times.
So does my wife.
But again, we want to help. The volunteers, everybody here is volunteers, and we came to work.
Thank you, Eddie.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate you very much.
Councilmember announcements. You want to go?
Are you going, Ken?
No, you.
You know, I don't have anything. I was supposed to have a meeting yesterday that got canceled with the Transportation Committee. And then just besides the OES and CalFire meetings that Kim and I went to that are all on record, I really don't have anything.
Ken?
As I think as everyone here has been busy with the fire, I was down at the LACs. I think Sue was down there as well. You were down, I think everybody was there. So just dealing with the immediate need for folks around the community that suffered. I would like to say that we've also been in touch with Rosenberg, although the phone call I just received was the guy that I need to talk to.
Of course.
I'm going, okay, bad timing. So, but we're going to attempt to do some long-term recovery. Our Resource Center has also attempted to do what we call the Weed Care Team, which involves most of the partners that we've dealt with in the past, such as the Ford Foundation and Behavioral Health. But we're trying to include the city in all of these talks, the schools, and part of the communities that have been affected versus, so weed and Chastina. And so far, we've gotten, I think we're getting a lot of people on board. So it'll be a little bit better effort than I think than we did the first time. That's what I'm hoping for.
I think we did, you guys did a really good job the first time around, so.
Yeah, they did. And I think there's, based upon the experience that some of our, it's not the greatest experience to have, but the experience we have in locally. And there's also others that have, I think everybody's noticed the changes that have happened in nine years. So some of it's still the same, though.
Stacy?
As a victim.
Survivor.
Yes. I want to thank all the resources, because I was going to lose it, that have been provided to many. And everyone's asked me questions. I'm like, wait, I'm a survivor too. The only thing I saw from day one was the disconnects in communications. I talked to the heads of Red Cross, not Mr. Henderson, but your Division Chair, CEO of the Northern Coastal Region, because messaging has not changed from the Red Cross knowing what OES is doing, what the county is doing. Now, I talked with each of the leads of that, and I got some inroads, but some things, and with personal help from also people of this community, things have just, a few hiccups, but went pretty smooth. But I just hope it could be smoother for the next time. And I'm glad I'm a part of it, so I can experience this, so I can know what's happening. And I appreciate all the resources. And I'm just happy that, not happy that we had the experience, but it puts some weight to what we need to do. And the disconnect is on the housing. And no one won't say, OES won't say, county won't say, city can't say, because we don't have enough money. But that's the challenge that we have. I don't have any more family here. I have one cousin who left, and he's in Redding, and everyone else is gone. So I don't have no way to go to, no places to go. And everybody said, we'll take care, we'll take care of you, but it's still haven't heard that. So that's the disconnect that I see, that others have seen, that I hope that in the future, currently, and also going forward, that we can have resources that can be able to meet the needs. Because early on, the Red Cross doesn't talk to the county. And you're in the county, but they don't know what they're doing. Then you have Red Cross come in, giving, I learned this, recovery for Red Cross is in two different divisions, recovery and, what's the other one? What's the other one? It's recovery and something else.
Response?
I think that's it, yes, yes. They did another term. But response, they got us to the evacuation center, yes, that was great. But then, what's the next steps? They didn't know. And you're on pins and needles, and that messes with your emotional part. And you know I'm very emotional, very sensitive. But still, I can say, I was blessed by the friends that I had. That reached out and personally met needs. I'm sorry, everybody can't have that. But I'm blessed because of that. And thank you all for your thoughts and prayers, if you called or didn't call. But I just say that, and everyone still comes to me, Stacy, what's happening? What are you going to do? What's the city going to do? And I always refer to Tim, sorry, you get a lot of calls. Because I know there's certain things we can't say, because we don't know. There hasn't been finalization, investigation team. And even though my rent house was the part, the first one that exploded, it was right there on that hill. And that goes right to my heart. That's the first house my parents bought before they bought the house on Crestmore. So I say, gosh, wow, all those years since 1946, what's going to happen? And we still don't know. They're in discussion. And we know things will come in. And patience is not one of my good things, you all know that. But I'm just thankful to what system we have in place. And I do agree with what you were saying, that I think in the last years, we have learned a lot. And it was a quick response that everything happened. I was on the first bus back to Warrica at 5:30 that night. And I said, aren't you waiting for anyone else? And everybody said, no, no one else is coming. I was like, well, this is a waste of funds. But that gave me time to reflect, and I got to the, he didn't know which recovery place to go. And I was calling Chief of Police, I was calling City Manager, where are you going to take us? He took, he passed the fair, and the cones were there. I said, there's the cones right there. He goes, no, we're going to the center by the Warrica High School. And nobody was there. I was like, oh my gosh, I'm on this bus for 30 minutes? What's going to happen? He said, let's try the cry. And tried, and he got there. And then everyone was very receptive. And every, the Red Cross, I'm telling you, I told them after this, I want to volunteer to be a part of that if something else happens, because it's such a good, it's volunteer time. I said, how do people volunteer from North Dakota and Texas and across, come all these states to help people? But you have that as a direction. And I'm just so glad that, it sounds weird to say, I'm glad that I'm a part of it. I miss the home and all things that I can't pull back from 60 years. But what's, I keep thinking about what's going forward. I hope that we all, and I'm saying this so everyone's looking, on TV can see, because they're all watching now, that don't give up. Just keep moving forward and trust your friends and your connections, that they will support you as best as they can. And that's how we have it. So I, my title, if I could title this as a sermon when I preach, I would say this, would be, thank you to all. Because I'm very appreciative of what the resources are out there, and the personal time that people have taken up to do things for me personally, and to reach out and check. And thank you, thank you.
I would, I would add one thing. I think everybody appreciates you as well, but this is a marathon on doing these things. Everybody, I see the angst in people's faces. But as Sue will attest, and I will attest, that the last time, we did this in 2014, actually we had a better housing issue at that time. It is weaker now as far as where we place people. It's going to be, it is a really difficult challenge. And that's the biggest challenge we have, is just finding.
Housing.
Housing. We have the McKinney Fire, which pushed people in different directions. We have the Mill Fire that's pushing people. There's some out of the mountain fire that are being pushed.
We already had a housing shortage.
Yeah, and now it's just almost non-existent. So it's going to be a battle of resources.
And it's tough when you hear Great Northern, I didn't miss out, Great Northern's purpose in it, not purpose, but activity. They promised certain things, and that didn't happen what they promised, what they told city officials, what they told victims, survivors.
I think there was some communication issues there, as you said.
Yeah, I think it was how it was presented.
And that's what I mentioned to everyone, like, okay, if you can get that better, that'll help people. Because you're right, after Saturday, my time stops with Great Northern. And I have a plan of where I'm going after that. But that's no more paid for. And I paid $600 on what I got the first six days I wasn't supposed to. Yet I was told that by the hotels, between what they were told by city officials and Great Northern. And I'm glad I was able to do that with what I had, but certain people don't have that. And I, it just, certain disconnects are like, no, get this right, get this right. We had seven years or nine, well, seven years. It's the last one to get it, so. And I wanted to ask you, the Weed Recovery Team, how does someone contact that organization? Or who do they contact to be aligned with that?
So far, it's not formally formed. We are waiting for some approval for funding, but it'll be at the Weed Resource, Family and Community Resource Center, Weed.
Yes.
And we will be organizing that. But again, it's, that's what the phone call, I wanted to take that call. I've been waiting all day for that phone call, and I'm going, okay, we're not going to do that.
Thank you for that addition. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. I speak for, I can't speak for everyone, but the last thing, I know the ones at Parrish, and we just talked, each of us, a couple of days before. And I go about 48 hours, and I will see them again. That's difficult. But resources were there, and they tried to help. And things just happen, life just happens.
But you will see them again, just not on this earth.
Right, right.
Thank you. Okay, I forgot.
She had something else to add.
I had something else. Huh? Yeah, for the first responders. Because everybody knows that I'm, I like the firemen. And the policemen did a great job, too. So I want to thank the fire departments and CalFire for their responses.
And, and something that somebody added the other day when, was thanking all the people that were in the neighborhood that were also out, picking up others and knocking on doors. And so I'll just throw that in there. So it has been a busy week and a half now, maybe?
225 days?
Yeah, it feels like it. And we've met a lot of people, and they're all here to help. And I do see some of the disconnect, but I know that they're all doing it from the heart. So, but like you said, it's a marathon, not a sprint. And we're not going to have all the answers in two weeks or maybe two months, but eventually, like you said, we'll just keep moving forward. And, and hopefully, we can help all of the people. And I know they're working on trying to find housing and, or housing solutions, so. And we, this, we say last time, and this time, and next time, and I really don't want to have a next time. I don't want to learn from this one for next time, so this is it. This is it. You, you can't speak during the, during our announcement. A public comment was right at the beginning of the meeting. And I believe you weren't here yet, so. You can't speak when, when we're in session. Okay, so that being said, we will move on to the consent agenda.
Before you do that.
Oh, oh, that's right.
We don't have staff reports tonight. And I have something I'd like to share with the council. I got a call from John Ray the day before, September 9th, it'll be September 8th of last week. And he invited all of us to come to the Weed Elementary School for a, I hate to say this, but it was, a long time ago, it was to recognize 9/11. Then it was added 9/14, 2014, and now they've added 9/2 of 2022. And they had a recognition for first responders, for the kids. So I took some videos and did a few things, and I have a two-minute thing that's going to pop up on the screen. It's just, just kind of, John and I kind of talked, he wanted me to talk to the kids about what, what, what does City Manager does, or what do we do? And I basically said, I'm kind of a coach. And a coach has players like firefighters, police officers, and public works. And I explained to the kids, you know, we all have to work together as a team in these situations and these crises. So this is just a quick little video of, of what happened that day, and I hope you enjoy it if it pops up. If not, it's all Jeremy's fault. It's, I'm waiting.
They put everything on Jeremy, it's okay.
It's supposed to pop up my little, let me see here, go back up here, AirPlay, right? And then I just get a black screen. It, well, the code, I just get a black screen. Have to play? No.
You erase it, but don't worry about it.
Hold on a second. No, it kicked me off of the Wi-Fi. There we go. All right, here we go, sorry. Jeremy and his top-secret Wi-Fi. Here we go.
I need the raise.
Here we go. I know, but it's not letting me. It's not, there it is. All right. Eventually, we're going to get here. I hit the code, now what do I hit? Play? I put the code in. 8902, okay. It is turned on. Oh, there it is. Now it's showing it, 8902, okay. Hold on a second. No, that's all right. Hold on a second, we'll try one more time, guys. I have, sorry. AirPlay. All right, here we go. All right, what do I do now? Anyway, I threw that together like, right before the council meeting, so it was kind of on the last second thing, so. Yes, ma'am?
Four of those firefighters that were in that room graduated from Weed Elementary School.
Oh, cool. So they did little dances on that floor a long time ago. Sorry. But anyway, it was just nice having Mr. Ray invite us all out there to do that. And we had been at it for a week at that time, because it was exactly a week. And it was much, much-needed distraction, because everything had been pretty, as we know, pretty serious for a week, and all of us needed that really bad. And having those little kids run around, giving everybody hugs, and handing out posters, and do the whole thing, it was really, really nice thing. So I know Steve and Justin can attest, unfortunately, Justin wasn't able to be there, but we had Sam Hopkins there. And Sam was the first police officer that responded, and is responsible probably for saving, more than he'll ever admit, saving lives. Yep, that's what I'm telling you, right there. That, these guys, and our fire department, Brian Carter's team, they arrived, they, the building was fully engulfed, they knew there was no way they were going to put it out, so they immediately headed and started trying to save folks. And, and had they not been sounding off the sirens and knocking on doors, we would be probably in a much, much different moment of recognition there, or moment of silence, unfortunately. But we were able to do that, so. But it took a whole team of us, and Craig's guys made sure, with no power, that our water and our sewer were working. And it, it's, we've come, and we've realized there's a few things that we need to improve on, too, which you do in these type of circumstances. But for the crew that we have here, 29 full-time employees, pretty remarkable for us to be able to do what we did. So anyway, big thanks to all those guys. Thank you as our leaders, too.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any questions, any concerns, anything that anybody would like pulled off of the agenda?
I move to, oh, sorry, Jeremy, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on. Council business. Number one, Planning Commission. Council will consider appointment to the Planning Commission for a full term ending January 31st, 2026. We received one letter of interest. Is that you?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. Any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Do we name that person? Or do, is that, does it matter?
Sure, since she's appointed, that'd be.
All right, well, after we're done. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Veronica Rivera will be appointed to the Planning Commission.
So are they full, they have five?
Congratulations.
Discussion item, council will discuss Council Protocol and Ethics Handbook. And we received two copies, or two examples.
My, my only discussion on it, on this, or comments, would be, I would like a little bit more time to review, because I was too busy to take a look at it all.
And, and I figure like, we have a month for you guys to ask questions, and you can ask me and David for any clarifications on those things, and we'd be glad to answer those.
We'll red-ladder this thing all up.
I got a pink.
Mine was purple. And I, I mentioned this before, the example number two seemed to cover everything, and then some. So I, I like it, I like all the points in it, but I don't, does this book need to be 10 pages long?
Some of them are a lot longer than that.
Really? This is, this is a short version?
What'd you say, David?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I think it's a standards version. They're certainly longer, and there are shorter.
They'll have to go in our handbook, our council members handbook.
Yeah, I, I'm sure.
Which we don't have.
If it was smaller font.
You will now.
Yeah, we will now. So I did have questions on the example one. I've already asked it, it's been answered, it wasn't anything really big. And I think number two pretty much covers everything. And it, and it does talk about us using Rosenberg's Rules of Order, which is kind of what we didn't, Bob was still here when we made the, I think we voted to go to that versus, okay, Robert's Rules. Okay, so we're already doing that. So if anybody else has any questions now, or we'll just keep it on, and we'll bring it back again next.
We'll bring it back at the next council meeting as a, an item to vote on.
In between?
You can ask.
Now and then, do you want us to email?
Yeah, email us, and we'll be glad to answer any questions, and for clarification purposes, absolutely.
Okay.
I mean, oftentimes, a lot of these things come up. I mean, oftentimes, a lot of these things come up in response to something that a particular board or council is dealing with. It's nice to get ahead of those things, so even though sometimes it may seem like there's a lot, it's a lengthy policy, that's because all of these things, some council or another has had to deal with.
Right.
And they wish they had something in writing.
Right.
To relate to it.
And they can always be amended on down the road, too, when something.
Else comes up.
Often, oftentimes, you know, if you've got a special meeting for a planning session or goal settings or something, you can also include, you know, reviewing the policy for updates and things like that.
Okay.
Makes sense.
You don't have staff reports on here?
No, I'm just reading.
Want any public comment on the?
Oh, does it?
Ethics policies, if anyone's got?
I need to take mine.
Public input is valuable for these.
Do you have any questions?
I just haven't, truthfully, I don't have any input, because I glossed over it. I'll get it.
Yeah, you have an opinion on it.
Yes.
Do you think it needs to be more than that?
It's only 10 pages, he said.
You think it needs to be more than that? Oh, you want us to take a class? We do.
Yeah, this is in addition to the AB 1234 training you're required to take every two years regarding ethics, as well as the sexual harassment training that's also required by council members and management.
Duly noted.
Yes. Is there anything that you guys have that's burning that you need to tell us about? Just, okay. All right.
But it's only two minutes after six.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that. What are we going to do for the rest of the evening?
I'm going to do all this other paperwork I have right here. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
We need to adjourn.